But they do the by the United States of America. Considering all the things that happens, one million eight hundred dollars individuals, they're taking others abroad.
Can we get a roll call Sunday?
Mr. Blanton, Mr. Renninger, Mr. Robinson?
Here. And basically, it's we question is being such a be primarily for the roundabouts, I think all that. We've got the first, trust me, Renninger, so we have Todd Gadberry here from county engineer. Dennis from the engineer, Karen from the branch, Peter Carroll, but yeah, if you would mind, we've had multiple meetings, well, conversations about this issue, we'd like to more business owners and new partners here, like trustee Beck, trustee Beck, but yeah, if you could give us the latest, I know there's been a lot of content, I'm waiting. This issue is back and forth, but we really need to make a decision one way or the other. Whether we're going to go forward, whether we're willing to scrap it, or let it be on hold for now, there's only three options, so.
Well, thank you, trustees, for having me here. That meeting, I mean, we're wobbling, but just give them a quick synopsis, you know, we started designing in fifteen. There was public meetings held. There were alternative designs, one was a signalized, we're roundabout, roundabouts, like the. So we applied for funds, okay, the OPWC funds, round thirty-five and two thousand. And we were awarded one million seven hundred ninety-seven thousand. Of that, fifty percent was going to be the OPWC portion, which was eight hundred ninety-eight thousand. It's changed, Hamilton County was thirty percent and Miami Township was going to do twenty percent. And as we know, COVID and the change in construction cost inflation, our construction estimate is currently at four point five million. That is for construction. So we discussed in the past that we're looking at returning the round thirty-five dollars back to OPWC, because it does not cover the budget. And then we discussed also applying for round thirty-eight, which is this September. Which the funds will be available in July twenty-fourth. If we were to get one. So that would make the application to OPWC four point five million. The concern we had at the engineer's office is over the next, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we have two very large out. We would be willing to keep our amount that we originally planned to put towards this project, which was five hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. That would, so the OPWC application for this year would be two point two five million. That would be if we got the grant. There would be OPWC for two point two five million. We would need from Miami Township, one million seven hundred ten thousand nine hundred dollars. The remaining portion would be Hamilton County at five hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred.
Hamilton County, you know, much, five hundred forty-nine thousand?
Yes, one hundred dollars.
So just to update everyone, again, as we've discussed previously. The discussion had been that all the ratios would stay the same if we were going to reapply in September. That the state would be committed to fifty percent, the county would be thirty percent, and the township would be twenty percent of the new higher estimate that would be not four to four point five million. And, you know, I'm not trying to, but I learned this morning, again, after they had a meeting, a budget meeting, I guess, and looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five budgets, that they were going to only commit to the original twenty percent of the original lower estimate before we get, we get that bump up, so unfortunately, our commitment of the twenty percent has gone from three hundred some thousand dollars, I believe, to about nine hundred thousand dollars under the new order, four point five million, now it would be one point seven something, change, which that's, that's a big, big number to swallow. The discussion that, that again, I had with Mr. Gadberry was, are we willing to pay that much for this? Until you can reapply for the grant in September. Where our portion would be obviously much higher than twenty percent. Are we just saying we're done with the roundabout after eight plus years? Or, or do we pause and put it on hold? And, and look and see if the engineering budget is better in two or three years, or we're giving it back, but this has been a long, 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 long process. We have everybody here to answer questions, the board has some questions, but we've discussed it at length, but I thought it was important to prevent this decision today that we have those that couldn't answer any questions we got.
So when I got a question, so in twenty twenty-five, what, if we put it, if we decided to wait and look at that, would we, what kind of investments would we send this week?
Do we do that? We have two, we have a fifteen million dollar project next year, that we have a large mansion. There's a following year, we have another large project, about ten million, the same kind of thing. We probably really could seriously look at six. Then every year, cost goes up. So we probably look at five to seven, possibly ten percent increase in cost.
How long does fifteen million dollar project put into my plan, if I do that?
Probably six, seven years.
This project is one.
Yeah.
Can I ask what the other two projects are?
Yeah, Field Turtle, Snyder and Wilkins.
Field Turtle, we could talk, Field Turtle was talking along with this whole, and that's basically for Charlie, we're proud of him.
No, Field Turtle has no roundabouts.
You know, what, this is one out, this is now true?
Yeah, it's a joint project with the one county. But there's no roundabouts. Now, the next one, Field Turtle, Poly Congreg, one signalized intersection, one roundabout.
Okay, so those costs on those projects, it's probably?
Yeah, very much.
But they spent the hell of this?
Well, hard to run for ten million years. Well, we've had that dollars budgeted for our portion. The one thing different on those, there's several dollars. And those will adjust with inflation.
How come there's no, no way to lock in our, our, our original bid? Back in two thousand and fifteen, when we did all, we do engineering cost, or engineering design of the intersection, we had all these drawings, how come there's no, there's no blocking in of that original bid?
Well, there were, there were no bids, I mean, there was a design, that's when it started. The cost of construction is going to be one of these, the year you go up to the construction.
So occasionally, it could go up again, couldn't it?
Yeah, but you wait till twenty-six, you're probably looking at five and a half.
We have to give guaranteed a four point five. You guarantee a four point five?
We're using the current numbers that we have. In, in the economy today, the moment today, it's very difficult. We've had to rebid projects because they came at an extremely high. It's very difficult to estimate construction. So we use state, state numbers, they keep it database, we keep it database. Grant, Carol leaves the database, and we correlate those all together to try to get the best pricing possible. Those are the standard prices, so we bid around the state.
If we resubmit a grant request, one, you may not get it, or two, it can be a much higher amount, right?
Uh, there's two options, you may not get it, or you may not get the full amount.
And it is my understanding that we could ask for the state to pay a higher percentage than the fifty percent that they had been committed to previously, but again, the more, the higher percentage that we go, the, the less likely our chances are of the eight, so.
The more you ask, the smaller it is then.
Yeah, so, so we can attempt that, we could, that, it's a possibility to attempt that, but then we might not get anything, or we might get less, or whatever, so. The state's the one who owns the roundabouts, right? They're the ones that should participate, get them on board, we had to do a roundabout.
It sounds, I wasn't here at the time, but I can probably understand the state pushing for the roundabout. So I haven't, I wasn't looking around for it in preparation.
That was our understanding at the time, Paul, maybe you remember, that the state wanted to do roundabouts, and this is my question is, two sixty-four is a state road, and here we are sitting, county and township talking about funding, it's a state road. They, they drug their feet on this thing for, this two thousand and fifty, we waited months and months to get replies from them. Where is their reply on this thing now? Can't they step up and, it's their road, it's not your road, it's not ours, it's their road that we're trying to improve, we put money in, where are they at in this ballgame? They, they, they haven't been to a meeting probably in six years on this thing yet. They came in the beginning to a couple meetings, and I'm saying a couple, two or three. It's their road, where are they at on this? Why are we pulling our teeth and our shoestrings and money to provide them, or they won't really? The county, back twenty-five years ago, asked for two sixty-four to be taken and turned over to the county. They said no, they want to keep it, because the county, there was an alternative to change around Harrison Avenue. It's their road, why aren't they stepping to the plate and saying, hey, we got, we got to keep this thing moving, if we want this road?
From what I understand, it was initiated at the local level. Or doing a project out, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't the state.
But they were the ones that said, go around it.
Well, it, it is their road, they will be taking over in once, yeah, once portions of it, once in three mil. So they do get, they get influence.
Unbelievable, it is, I'm very much. You're wasting time. Is, is there any plan B that if we don't do it around the? Planes or any?
I guess not, because it's still a state route, and they wouldn't participate, right? Yeah, there would, there is no definite plan B we can always look at, doing just a turn lane or some sort. It'd have to be engineered and maybe we can get the state on board then, but it hasn't right now, no.
I saw a resume follow that the state decided because we did the study, I thought we did the study on the turn lanes, and they shot it down because they wanted them to run. So they wanted to land it up from here. I thought originally we were looking at a turn.
Well, it's not.
There were two, there were two of those, from what I understand, there was a turn lane and a roundabout option, but they said to decide go to the round.
The roundabout was the way for the future. They're the ones that spearred township or the county to go to this round by slumping an engineer, which went through the RMP one. That's when Grant Sir, Carroll was chosen. But we, I am saying, I was having at least fifty meetings on this thing. And I just feel somebody wasted my time, a lot of county engineers' time, and we've gotten those. But wasted, and the cost has escalated, we get it now, so at what point, we're just basically throwing garbage and darting around here. Here's, I don't know. And I know the county's changed, decision makers, ODIP. You know, we've never seen the same person, so we're pretty tired of all these different people coming to those sessions.
So I'm, I'm just speaking from my self statements. I'm just a scrappable idea, but to, you know, look at it again, we have a twenty twenty-four for twenty twenty-six. I know the cost is going to go up, so I'm probably going to be saying, but maybe the county could put in, maybe we could get the state to, there is the county that worked on it.
We're going to make a slight correction, when we say state putting the money in, the Ohio Public Works is not managed or through the state.
Right.
It is, it's OPWC. It's a separate funding organization, not through the state.
But the state funded, I believe.
No, it's Ohio Public Works money. State funding, if you say that, normally you're thinking of a federal project, where the, the Ohio Department of Transportation, transportation over the state is managing it, or in their own.
You know, we purchased the corner up here, was the idea, the campus availability. Can we go back to the state, we get the state on board, say, can we at least get some turn lanes in there? Coming out first down the road, there was a turn lane starting in the Shalem, or coming out of Shalem, there was a right turn lane, two lanes going out. It would improve the traffic immensely, but all we're doing is talking and not getting any action. I, I, the turn lane, the turn lanes are what it's going to take. Let's get something done, let's not just talk for nine years and say, no, we can't do it. I think it's total frustration.
When I talked to Paul earlier, and it's like, you know, we see these roundabouts popping up all over the place, and we asked other areas. I think it's, it's just very, yeah, it's very disheartening, like, for having this conversation.
I put it in there, it's, it's.
Right.
What's your reputation like, you're charge of the project, what you?
Well, I think it was kind of, kind of weird. Dan was, I think, a little into, and that, I don't want to see it just be scrapped and say we're not doing anything, because for me, the residents have heard, just like I heard with other projects, that the residents have heard, the businesses have heard, that this is something that the township clearly intended on doing for years, years, years. Just to say we're just going to walk away, throw in the garbage, it's going to be difficult. I think we can still explore and see if turn lanes or, or something to improve. I think that, that, that this is our business core up here, and that, you know, a facelift and a little extra life in here would be good for everyone, if it's done properly, but I'd like to, I, I'm not ready to spend one point seven million dollars, so I would say, let's, let's pause it. Yeah, let's, let's put it on hold, and, and look at, you know, a year, year and a half from now. In the meantime, we can still be talking and seeing if there are other options that are more cost effective and and even less of a commitment for us, they could spruce up that area, make it, the traffic flow better, but not, you know.
That's my thinking, close, and looking at turn lanes, looking at certain turn lanes, that you said.
Sure.
And still scratching.
I mean, because we, we were talking about, you know, putting that township sign up there, and having that be welcome to Miami Township. And kind of putting that, you know, a, a, and, and I would still love to see all of those things, the plan was, as soon as this got off the ground, to, to move directly onto that, but I don't want to put something in there and then tear it back up, if, you know, if we end up doing something, but yes.
Mike, didn't you just say that the state's not going to want turn lanes?
So they, they made it clear that their preference was the roundabout, but, but is, are turn lanes cheaper than doing that? I don't know, maybe you guys know, maybe you don't, but if it's cheaper, and maybe, in my mind, if, if we express collectively, how frustrating, how frustrated we are that this is eight plus years in the making, and and to, to get, to, to be where we are with it, maybe we can lobby and see what we can do when it's something that, I don't know. Maybe you guys remember better than I, but I don't know, I think that.
I think turn lanes would actually be more dangerous. As far as the entrance and exit, that's kind of our shady ring plaza, to which our main entrance is off the Shalem Lane, a hundred feet from that intersection. And if you've got two lanes to cross instead of one, it's going to be that much tougher for cars to get through that intersection. I don't know whether it's going to be that much cheaper, I'm not in the contract and business, but it, it just depends, I mean, we've got the footprint absurdly. It would have to be reengineered. Traffic turn, movements would need to be, and due to the location of the entrance to the plaza, they could make things so difficult.
They're talking about, you're not, you're not.
How, or just impact, any agreement you guys had with your day?
If we stop it now? There are no agreements.
No, we're in company.
They had been negotiating since the, once we got that higher estimate, and it looked like we were contemplating the viability of the project as a whole, and but everything on, it caused those negotiations. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, it just, you had to go from three hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand to one point seven million. And, and like, what were trustee Beck said, it's, it's a state road. It's a, it's a tough, tough, tough project.
So who from the township has been working with the state of PWC? And where do those negotiations hang?
As far as OPWC, I mean, it's been decided to return the, the first round money that we got. It just doesn't go back. So I think Freshland, we're brand coordinator, I'm at the engineer's office, and it's going to be working with Miami Township to get that coordinated, to get that returned. We, you know, we've been looking at, putting, getting an application together, putting some numbers together, through the application this year, but it sounded like we may hold off on that.
If there's a township or the county on the hook for any money, or working that, and?
I mean, I think all of us have put quite a bit of money into this project. With, you know, appraisals, engineering, so there's, there's money out there that has been said, yes. I don't have those exact figures. And I did ask that, just trying to figure that out.
That would probably have to have been done, no matter what, the roundabout, the turn lanes, whatever it is.
You're going to have more than, if we look at turn lanes. And that's what, in eight years of this company class.
About any other commissions?
Yes, by us. We've been, you know, my brother Don and I are the owners of Shalem Plaza, and Paul knows, we've been waiting eight years for this to happen. We've put off on improvements and repaving the parking lot, everything, we don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo our parking lot. We had it torn up in two years, so that's why we were assuming it was going to be done this year, next year it works.
We were too.
Yeah, I, and I realize that. I think it's time to.
I agree, to do a joint project, I mean, no one group can say, right now, we do a project ourselves, we go in and do it, get it done, but. Is the tripling of costs due to the construction cost primarily, or is it a bit of everything?
A bit of everything, we, like, really, there's been bad timing with COVID, supply chain, which affected concerning costs, we've seen concerning costs go up thirty, forty percent. Well, I just like to thank you guys for being a big part, and I'm sure you've been working with us, so I, I'm sure you're frustrated because you've been, you know, very understanding for you, but, and engineers, and us, so, I get it, I, I'm sure it's not what you want to hear, but certainly not what we want to hear.
We all want the same thing, we want it to be safer to get through that intersection, easier for all the township residents to get through the intersection, even out of the business, and whatnot, and, you know, again, realizing costs do go up. I'm wondering if and when a recession would happen, what that would do to construction costs. Right now, the price keeps going up because there's not enough, the supply demand is out of bounds. But if things really slow down, that we go into a recession, as many of you have been, what that would do to the cost a year from now, two years from now. You know, we can't plan on that, I realize. Something to keep in mind, in the meantime, I would contact whoever we need to at the state level, and, you know, play our case.
And I'm happy to reach out to our state reps and see if they can, you know, shed any light or nudge or do whatever. So obviously, we have a big relationship with them, but ultimately, you know, they don't control it either, it would just be a voice, an additional voice of support to, and that's what I said, you know, if we do come back in a, you know, a year, two years, three years, that's not what we want to do, but if, if there's more of an outcry from everyone collectively saying, this is, you know, this needs to be way up there on the priority list, I don't know. I'm not sure, but I don't sense from my colleagues that they are ready, you know, ready to pull the trigger on this number today. And we can also, you know, contact our local, there's a, we set a meeting, and, you know, that is your road. We have fallen short of funding, is there something we can do in the next year or two to assist? We can do that round, it's, they're, they're pretty well planned out. So we can try.
What, what do you think, Mike, to give it?
We're deciding which way we go with this.
Well, I don't know if we need it. I don't, but I, I, I think it sounds like the board, you know, believes that, that we're just not willing to leave that one point seven million number at this time, and that we continue to work on it, and explore our options, understanding that we don't want to leave it the way it is, and then we don't want that, the businesses don't want that, the residents don't want that, and that we just are committed to continuing to look at turn lanes, look at this roundabout, explore additional funding from OPWC and ODIP, or anyone else that wants to chip in for this project. So, same as I said?
Two degrees southbound.
Would there need to be a motion of returning? For the current, oh, oh, we see great, I think.
I thought we did that last month.
We did.
Okay, great. So. Well, I guess we get together, and maybe next summer, sort of see where we are, and I, I'll look at, send a meeting with ODIP to see if there's anything we could maybe collect.
Okay, sounds good.
And then obviously, you, you're, and you've sent to me to take care of the short term, also, the utilities and everything else, so. You want to set up, set up a meeting or do, whatever we can do, whether that's in person or virtually. Right?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Neehouse. I even gave Neehouse, in the, the original drawing, the top there on the easel. Is not the way that we would like to go, the way that we would like to go is the new piece of paper. And it goes from a hundred and twenty units now to sixty six units. It's, it's on a public street, so. Part of that is within, we come here and it's this public road, part of it is a more bend.
So I have enough to, um. They showed me that the old plan. Now I'm gonna say the blessing, but not the entirety, correct? Hundred and ten, hundred and ten units down to sixty six.
Thank you, you're honored.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, it went from a hundred and ten to sixty six. So, with working with the county and the county would be dealing with everything. I believe one year, I call this would be council, this would be. This would be all, and this would be all. So. Mr. Neehouse is asking us for a plea to keep the money. To, we don't, we're not really assigned at all. County was looked at and you're, should so they should have reported this. What, uh, how the township. Excuse me, feels about it, I don't. I'm okay, but I asked him, come present at the book, you, let me look at it. See what, where if you have any questions, the call is.
But by going down to sixty seven long block, you can make the lots can be bigger, or you should have more green space, or. There's gonna be more green space. And it's just trying to get into the price range that would be more affordable, because like you guys were just discussing cost and. Everything is starting so high, well, to get something in the five hundred or six hundred price range, you have to go down to that size.
And, and these are single unit?
They're multi-units, so some of those are two per building, and one's four, I think. And that gives you the ability to sell two outside units, one inside, so hopefully the one inside is the best.
It was essentially nothing, thing that we're okay with, something that's.
No, with design, everything still has to be a vertical account.
We just didn't wanna spend a lot of engineering time and then find out, you know, little hiccups on the way.
All the other units were similar to this, like two and three and four units?
Those were, there was more fur, like they were, in that drawing, they're taking a lot more of the dirt and trees and everything away. Where this were leaving a lot more.
Can we ask for these back of millions, other millions?
There, there'll be like a random median meaning that you will own the inside and three feet around the outside. Then the association will own the rest of it.
Is there really any actual stressors or more informational?
No, I don't really know, just more informational, because it's like this is a county, that's the.
Sure.
Sign off and everything. Just overall, I feel about the prospect, I, I don't think, they, those visual designs, two thousand and five, correct?
Yeah.
So this is up there, it's gonna reduce this. The residents, you know, they're beside like that.
It was timeframe, just in general.
Hopefully, we start in this brand and then fully develop a lot of, you know, the, to get all your permits and the way.
So do you? So, Paul, do you see? You looked at this before? Okay, I'll make a motion that. Uh, that just my new pastor, it's okay with, uh, you know.
Yes. This, this is this right now, this is.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks, appreciate it. Okay, is there anything else in the public?
Uh, the only thing is, um, you know, the hour we're back, the, the pen is not here. Um, I was leaving last night about the dinner, and I could see the girl on the golf cart. Um, they're twelve years old. Um, so, um, I told him that, you know, state law says you have to be, you know, operated golf court and golf cart. He might look from your parents to that, and I gotta look like, you know, the reason, so.
Okay.
But that was it.
This is, this is got under the structure, maybe related about the roundabout stuff, and the option to be here are regular schedule.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, and the thing, someone another lady here at the last meeting, and she says they come down shady lane or. Down triple crown, and then they go out on shady lane, going the wrong way, to get to the swim club. That's definitely dangerous.
Then they come down to the coffee shop, there was Ben, you can see him down there.
I don't know, I, I, I don't get it, I'm glad I don't have kids, for all saying. That's it, take care of it.
So you got one, okay, go ahead, go ahead then.
So, I wanna talk about, uh, some maintenance on our road, so. We have a small map that was gonna happen, uh, what happened was. Trying to make the long story short, while. They had to mill down, that we built, they were milling down two inches on two, um. Individual spots, they were quite large spots, and they had to go down all the way to. So, and Ronnie get really okay on that, which, which we do need it, um. We do the four inch, we have to go back a couple. So, long source way of this is, we are going from four hundred seventy hundred thousand to five sixty. It's a thirty fifty thousand, seven hundred twenty one dollar increase. And so, I'm looking at that before the board to approve that increase. So we can continue with the rest of our, it's, uh, because probably, put it on, well, I told him I had, I inside all hundred, so I break this.
Is that, that's one, I wanna. Yeah, it, it was pretty muddy, and they had pictures of the four inch cut. Jack, where it's still had, had water actually on it, there must have been a spring or something down there, but it went, and it got down to the eight inch cut. It was a lot drier than the four inch cut, so. And there was no sign of it, you go down.
So, do you have any discussion?
So this is, this would be stuff that, I'm thinking that.
Correct, we, we had an estimated four inch of agents. And what happens?
Part of it was an eight inch cut, an estimated eight inch cut, and then it turned out it had to be, the entire patch had to become an eight inch cut because of the water fluid. If you left the water fluid in there, it just would have popped it back up. So, so Ronnie okayed it, so.
And I got that straight. But we didn't think possibly, you know. I'll make a motion and we go ahead and approve, we had mandatory. It's five hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, seven sixteen thousand.
Okay, so we're really just increasing thirty six thousand? Will they need? The new CO, or, or just, can I just? Of the whole toe, of the toe?
Uh, so you, you made a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blain?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
I got one quick thing, I never went so behind, uh, next meeting. But if we're willing to discuss, we can, but I think it's very easy. So anything else, uh, with that other situation? He's been picking up work down in township, uh, my township west. Dragon feels doing his work, when he's there and when he's in the fashion, he's locked in over. So, and when he's first started, I told him to donation, keep track of that, always. I've been down there multiple, multiple, multiple times. At our, for us. So, I'm gonna make a motion, he's got over a hundred hours of testing, and that's just. From right now, and the rest of the year, he's down there for soccer and other, uh. We're not, we're not gonna pay him, we're gonna make a donation, I suggest. To tune a five hundred thousand albums and check with the association. For Keith Dunn, and he's okay with that, it's been a pain, but, now I have talked to Cindy. And she's telling him I wanna look at it next year and what he wanted to do, but he. Donation to him, I don't know, community Johnson, for the, for the side credit exchange. For the, for the new community fund for.
Yeah, so is, is he doing work at J K, should be running.
Well, no, no, no.
I didn't say that.
Oh, I thought you said. So, no, he's, he's picking up for him when he's there, help him when he's there, and then when he's absent, he's been out down three times. And he says he's been in school, that he's been, um, throughout the fields. And then to trash, clean bathrooms, and all working there, I know the woman who shoveled. Paint out dugouts from the mud. So, uh, there's a lot, and it's a lot of good stuff, at a very cheap rate, if you total the hours, uh, it's a hundred and ten dollars. And that doesn't include the hours for the rest.
Well, we're here, s- s- so, so I would say, I appreciate everything that Adam's done. Um, I am supportive of making the donation, just because I think it's a good thing, um, so what is already an economist. I think that we should look at whether this is something that J J should be doing, or whether we need to look at. Um, our operation as a whole, for your young mayor, and get a better handle, rather than just having. These volunteers, which God bless them for what they're doing, but just doing all this and then using it afterwards and saying, oh, maybe we should try to. Do something to make things right or whatever, so, um, you know, I would support this donation, but the unders. Um, get a better, he's got us with, with, so to say, a- a- and, and I'm not saying necessarily. Add, I, I don't know, I think we need to conscious look at adding payroll and all that other stuff of. Things that people were doing anyway, try to boost it up, um, but is, is J J being needs, is, you know, not, what, what do we need?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you, but overall, I would just say this, when both companies went out and down and maybe. All the way to the town, but, and I, I told him that he cracked two hours and I, I was just, I was asking for one thing, and I was all aware of when. And everything's a work.
He's not covering the workers. Someone has, we can get.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We have a maintenance department that, you know, does.
He, he, other law, going as far as through those.
I, I'm just saying, next year, we just.
We could definitely, yeah, make sure we come.
Right.
I, I think it's, I think it's good. I think about the N R G, and empty all your garbage can and separate out garbage from the. And shovel back into the. I mean, like Mike said, the volunteers are paying tax, I'm all for it, but any of them.
And to make a donation out of these union funds.
I, I said I support this time, I just think that we need to get better. Just make some hours.
All right. I don't think it was anything bad this year, like I said, I, I really, I probably get it to be. But we needed them, I, I didn't have it. I'll make a motion and we go ahead and make a donation to. For a, a, a association, and the amount of one thousand dollars. I would want, um, by the president of the association, uh, anyways, I'll send it there.
All right, Mr. Blain?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Danny, you wanna go ahead and do your thing?
We just need to approve the, um, insurance, health insurance increase, two percent, that'll start September first. Um, you all have copies, your box. And we kinda have to deal with this, those, of the union contracts and. Um, I mean, we don't have to, but I think a two percent increases, that's better, because. We've known in the past, it's been ten percent, twelve percent, you name it.
But you know, and whenever, I mean, at some time, shortly, you start negotiations with the union. Delivery series would be in negotiation, but, I mean, family, we're, we're paying twenty five thirty two million for the insurance. For family, plus we're putting in.
The H S A.
Seven thousand, well, maximum allowed by I R S.
Right, the seventy five hundred paid later year, right?
We just need to remind them that. Make a motion, go ahead and, so, make a motion, go ahead and accept the insurance at the. You option for a.
Mr. Blain?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes. That's it, if there's nothing else, we're gonna need to go to the executive session, it has to do with personal matters and personal.
Okay, Mr. Blain?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes. Okay, turning from, uh, executive session, uh, Cindy, your role.
Mr. Blain?
Here.
Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here. And the only business that we have to take action on is the presentation of my township rules and regulations. And, uh. We'll wanna vote to approve making these township rules. Uh, I'll let you guys make a motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, appreciate that we pulled this together, this, uh, contains eighteen policies that I think. Will help, uh, stay up with our training and our personnel, and so I would move that we. Adopt the rules and regulations that again contain eighteen policies.
One second.
Okay, Mr. Blain?
Here, yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?